I'm calling this meeting to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Here.
Depeña?
Here.
Graciado?
Here.
Nautari?
Here.
Ravel?
Here.
Stromel Burke?
Here.
Is that good?
Good.
And Mayor Malham?
Here. Oh, oh, hey, everybody. Uh, pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic we serve, in one nation, under God, indivisible, that we believe in, just as all. Doncha?
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, known as the Sunshine Law, notice of this meeting was published in Thursday, December 22, 2022, editions of the Belleville Times and the Star-Ledger. The Sunshine Law was complied with by adopted and forwarded to the press, posted and filed with the Municipal Clerk, the annual resolution showing the date, time, and place of each regular meeting, and a copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the Timeship website and also on the bulletin board.
Okay. Like to welcome everybody to our first meeting in April. We have two meetings every small month. Always, the first meeting of the month is considered our work session slash council discussions, at which any council member or member of the administration can put any topic on they'd like to discuss. These discussions are in among ourselves, with you, the audience, listening and watching. A little different, but if you do hear something that sparks your curiosity, you most likely, uh, most certainly can speak during the public commenting section. Uh, this moment is really just between us and our invited guests and professionals. Uh, so I see the deputy mayor has put some topics on. Um, so deputy mayor, it's all yours.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Uh, just a couple of things. I wanted to share with the council that I put a couple of things out there for IT, to, um, the manager, and others for cost savings in our up and coming budget, whether it be cell phones, whether it be copiers, whether it be a whole bunch of other things. So, that's conversation that is happening as we speak. Anthony, Stormwater RFP, where are we with that?
Lowie.
That's the townwide?
Yes, I believe it was, uh, because I looked right before I got there. I believe it was March 21st. I sent you and Alvid an email with Tom Harretts, and I asked you all to distribute the last proposal that we received, and we did not award it.
Right.
I suggested to maybe Tom, yourself, and whoever else might want to sit in it, to see if we have to change that specification around, or do we just take that and rebid it? So, that's probably, if not a year ago, close to a year ago, it's done, it was distributed. And if we want to, I believe we need to, I think, I think, cause at a certain point you have to, it's null and void, we can authorize to go out and get proposals again. But before we go out and get proposals, I think we need to fine tune the specification.
I, I agree, I just don't know where I fit into that, waiting for my response, but it's been a year. Uh, I think with everything happening in Belleville, or in a state with the water, we need to act on it because Bloomfield, Nutley, surrounding towns have, and I don't want me to be up here, or us, when something happens and falling back on us, but we need to get ahead of that.
Do you want to, um, either make a suggestion or even a motion that we do go out to bid again? Cause I think--
I thought, I thought that's what we said a while. Let's go. Yeah, go out to bid.
So, we'll take the, and again, but, and this is the only question I have. Are we taking the existing specification that we did the last time? Because since then, we've had conversations on a pump, uh, to include, to be included in it, or the pump not to be included in it? So, that's--
We could pump-- I, I think we--
Include it--
It's townwide.
As a separate, as a separate--
Line item.
Yeah, separate line item. Should be townwide, yeah.
Okay, so we will, um, we'll get authorization to go out and get proposals for Stormwater Matt.
Okay. Uh, gas updates. Uh, I know we went ahead and we approved, or I remember, I don't know off the top of my head, I don't know when it's coming in, but we approved some type of software package or something to analytics, so we can start getting some dollars and understanding.
Eight to 12 weeks. I think it's, it's actually 16 to, excuse me, Bob, I'll take that answer. It's 16 to 18 weeks to, which it has been ordered. 16 to 18 weeks will probably take us into June, and as soon as it comes in, we intend to apply to other vehicles.
Okay. And then we can get some baseline on how we're spending.
It does, as the, the package that we are engaged in is a, it comes with a ring that is placed in all 210 vehicles. If you don't, if you're not a municipal vehicle without that ring, you can't get gas. If you are a municipal vehicle with that ring, you not only get gas, it gives us a printout, the date, the time, how much.
Okay, so it goes ring to vehicle ID, goes to who owns the vehicle, or who uses the vehicle? There is a, I'm gonna assume that Tommy has a vehicle, which is a lie, but, uh, we're wrong, and he uses gas, and he uses this much per month, so you can actually get analytics from that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Is the ring per person or per vehicle?
No, the ring is actually, the one we're looking at, or the one we actually did in upgrades. We were going, the initial request was to get like a FOB. FOB is a keychain. Problem with a FOB, you could give it to him.
Correct, correct.
The ring goes in a municipal vehicle.
Just stays in there.
Do you pull up to the, if you pull up to the pump, if it's not a municipal vehicle with a specific ring inside your pump, it's not gonna work.
Steve, two-factor authentication. What you have and what you know.
How, just to jump in on that, how many employees do we have that use their own vehicles and get gas?
Probably less than 10.
Will they have that on?
How do they get gas?
I'm sorry?
How do they get gas?
They get clothing allowance.
Um, I'm sorry?
Gas allowance.
Gas allowance. Then I'll follow with the pump.
Totally allowance.
Bobby, I believe not. As long as we get the new gas pumps in, they will not be. It's just a straight gas allowance.
Okay.
Gas allowance.
Yep, that's good.
Thank you. Uh, meters online, I know we had conversations across the board on Washington Avenue meters. I know I can, through the-- Where is, is all Washington Avenue down towards Resignetti, or R and R, are we doing anything there?
Yeah, so a part of my report talks about the Washington Avenue streetscape, so that would also, we're working hand in hand. Our planner, Aaron Bucci from CME, is working with the developer, so that it's continuous, seamless, good transition, and it's the same, uh, better words, it's the same pattern.
And then if we can look at it, I don't know if council agrees, but Franklin Avenue from Hilton to Chesa, I think it would be a nice place to look at putting, uh, meters, because Nutley does come over and park there, uh, and there's a lot of things that are going on at this time and point. I don't know what everybody feels about that, but just a thought, you know, looking at Franklin Avenue on that side.
It's not the business district, but I think the gas is gonna be your problem.
Right, because it's just coming, it's falling over, right? It's coming over, it's on the line.
They can't park overnight.
They are, they're parking over.
Yeah, but we have, we already have a--
Permit?
Permit.
Should we do permits?
Not, I, we're--
We do, we absolutely do.
On Franklin Avenue?
What's the side, the last side street?
Hilton Street.
Hilton.
Yeah, I think the council, the deputy mayor is speaking of Franklin Avenue. We don't have--
There's no permits.
There's no permits there, but Hilton does, right? I think what he's saying, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, deputy mayor, uh, people that can't park overnight, Nutley are coming onto Franklin Avenue in Belleville and parking overnight.
Or people in new buildings that don't have--
In new buildings? That's, that's what I said.
Parking are parking there overnight too.
Either or.
But we're not gonna enforce meters overnight.
Right.
So, what's the point?
I agree.
Are we gonna enforce the meters overnight?
Well, I, that's a whole other conversation about enforcing meters, so you wanna have that conversation, we can have it.
But I don't think it's realistic to do meters overnight, but I agree.
Okay. Uh, and my last but not least is, I had a couple complaints. I know, mayor, you were on an email, I think chief, you were on the email regarding Graylock Parkway and Norton. Uh, I know you did a great job, chief, with putting, uh, Fremont, is Fremont and Graylock a four-way stop sign? I think that was a brilliant idea, put it there to slow the traffic down. I think--
The council did that.
No. I know, but it came through, it came through your--
It came through your--
It came through your recommendation, or, you know. So, I'm thinking something like maybe that on Norton Street, because, uh, a lot of things are happening, I mean, there are oversized trucks that are coming, we know that. Um, and, and I didn't realize it, but until people started complaining, they actually listened, I should say, when they see the stop sign, they listen, they slow down. And you're by the school district, which is number five, which is the high school, and they actually do slow down to stop. That would just be a thought, uh, to do a traffic analysis, or whatever you think, chief, or council, to see, putting, putting it there for safety, because they, they actually do slow down.
Okay.
And that's all I have. Thank you, mayor.
Uh, just to jump off one or two of those talks.
I think, I think--
I'm sorry. Through the chair, through the-- I, I know you brought up before, Tom, relative to the stadium, now that the stadium is complete, do we want additional oversight up there? I, I know we talked about this a while back, I'm just trying to, is there anything we need to do up there? Do you wanna do something up there?
The Silver Side Park Ranger?
Yes. Yes, all of them.
Oh, yes, to all of above, we, I know we, we shared it, I, I shared my concerns with Anthony, and I know he's working on it, on how we're gonna share or secure, not only there, but across, a couple of them working with the Board of Education.
Right.
We're waiting on that, uh, recommendation. Okay.
Do we have, I know we had somebody up there, but now we don't. No, we, we, we have more than one person up there, so we will continue to have people up there, and it is probably one of the top three items, um, that we made residential and Dr. Tom Paul working on as far as the Chesa department. I believe at the next council meeting we met, you even had a resolution to, uh, as far as continuing to the Chesa.
And, and if I may, just to continue our conversation, uh, there was concern about originally the four-foot fence--
Right.
That went up top, and this was supposed to be the Neglia final walkthrough. I wasn't part of it, so I don't know if it ever happened, of our concerns going forward, because when they hit the ball on Norton Street, it goes over, we were thinking of going up, we were thinking--
What's the--
Kids actually go up, they jump over, they're bending the fence.
Yeah.
So, I was just trying to, you know, the gates need to be secured, there's some other things that need to happen. I don't know where the status is with that.
Yeah. We just need updates.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, I know there's a walkthrough, so that was one of the topics, we never really did the crosswalk across the driveway, we never had a speed bump in the driveway, now that pickleball courts are about to be open, and people park in front of the old tennis court, the tennis courts, crossing that, even if you're trying to get to the dog park, there's gonna be a 17-year-old kid coming down that driveway. It's gonna be bad.
And then the--
Speed bump, crosswalk, that was also a big part of the plan.
Yeah, and speaking of the stadium, the, uh, epoxy coating we did on the stadium, about, I don't know, eight years ago, it's probably at the end of its life, so I think we need to get the actual stands that, that faces up. Not, I know we spoke about underneath fixing up, but the top part of it needs to get, the cracks have to get filled, and gotta get epoxy coated on there, so.
You're talking about the seating area?
The actual seating area on the stand, so maybe, uh, Tom Harretts had, was in charge of it last time, maybe you could talk to him again.
That's a big project.
I don't know. Yeah, not, not doing it, but just taking the--
We need to rest.
I know the deputy mayor's been talking constantly about gas, gas, gas for the last couple of years, we're finally getting that done, glad to hear that. I've been talking about recording the phone lines, it's real easy, it seems like, to put money in the capital budget to get this stuff done, but getting you pushed over the finish line, it seems to be, I think that was in capital budget two years ago.
So, I can talk to you, mayor, right?
Oh, sure.
So, what, what ended up happening is, it was approved, we're working with, um, JCT, and we're working with Verizon--
And we had two options.
To, no, to get the line switched over to SIP, we're actually working through that process as we speak, uh, and that's with Verizon and JCT right now. Once that happens, then we can finish the second and third phase, but we have to get everything over SIP to come through this building, so that we can actually disperse, and that's just not for this building, that's for townwide, every building that we have.
It works. Uh, I guess since we're on that topic, uh, internet at this last, internet at the senior building, will that allow us to get internet at the senior building? Because without internet at the senior building, we can't watch TV, but more importantly, we can't add swipe access to that building, we can't add an alarm to that building, you can't do a lot to that building.
So, it goes to one of my four recommendations in technology, to where we were looking to save money and moving everything off of Comcast to another carrier?
Stuff like that?
Uh, no, that was going to a different carrier for these buildings, for what they need as far as internet access, for monitors, meaning, uh, television or outside data and voice. Where we wanted to go with, uh, another carrier was the senior building, and yes, light paths would be at the senior building and giving them full access.
Cause we're still using keys.
I'm in the holding pattern, yes, until I'm approved. Meaning, it's out there for dollars, it's out there, we just need to get approved and then execute. Okay.
Anybody else? No? Moving on. Mister, next on the agenda would be the report of the manager.
Uh, so, uh, on our agenda tonight, we are a, we have a resolution rejecting, uh, the bids that we received for the school number nine project, also known as the Plansoll Park. This is a great project, unfortunately, uh, the lowest bid was somewhere around 2.6, which is about 0.5, more than we were hoping for, maybe even more than that. So, again, the, the project will certainly be one of our jewels, because we're resurfacing the field, creating more softball, more soccer, dog park, uh, an additional pickleball, uh, court, and a inclusionary playground. So, we'll, we'll be back out to bid, we're scheduled, I believe, for May 4th, um, for a rebid, so let's hope that that works out, because I know that is our next biggest project, equivalent to what we did up at the stadium, which is, at the end, the end product could be just as nice. Uh, today, we met with the New Jersey Economic Development Agency, uh, authority, they have allocated, uh, two projects for us. One is the Main Street Flood Mitigation Project. This is putting check valves down in the valley. This work is gonna actually very much start on Thursday of this week.
That's right.
And, uh, so that's part of the overall, um, street flood mitigation project, so that, that's gonna be helpful in the valley. The Washington Avenue Streetscape is scheduled to start mid-May, and again, we're working very closely with the developer, like I just said. And the last thing I will end my report on, uh, you know, kudos to Bobby Bogdan, DBW, for the third year in a row, we were recognized as a tree USA community. This is a program that started back in 1976 to encourage towns to become more green, so to speak. There are so many advantages, uh, of having trees, whether it's, um, reducing noise, noise level, uh, increasing energy. Homes that have trees have greater values, that, that's a, a statistic that people don't take into consideration. And in all fairness, for every call that we get to plant a tree, we usually get a call to have a tree removed, but we try to, we try to appease and keep everybody happy, uh, but in most cases, when we do remove a tree, for whatever reason, we try to replace that tree, and based on the work that Bobby and DBW is doing, we've been recognized for the third year in a row.
Good job.
Good job. It would be my management.
The chair, have, have a quick question.
Sure.
So, I think you saw the thing about the crosswalks, especially by the rec house and, and also by the schools, we need to, I guess, repaint a lot of them, so.
Yeah, so normally--
It should be a high front.
Normally, that's sometimes, that's a summer project, where we do the fire hydrants with the summer, in summer health and things like that nature. I think--
Cross, crosswalks.
I think the chief was in on maybe one of those emails, and I'll make sure that Pignatero has a copy of it. This is just, uh, some of the crosswalks need to be--
Especially ones by the rec and by the schools.
Then we go where else I come from? If we get the streets paved, we do them too.
Yeah.
Yeah, once a year, we do them.
Anthony, you mentioned Washington Avenue Streetscape, just to be clear, that's Washington Avenue Streetscape from Graylock Parkway to Nutley, not the state DOT project that's scheduled, that's different.
Okay, next on the agenda is report of the mayor, starting with some past events, uh, this past Saturday. No, two Saturdays ago, was, uh, April 1st, we had Easter egg hunt, we probably had 500 families, I know the quote was 500 children, we had far more than 500 children, probably about 500 families that were there, uh, at school seven. I know we've had 6,000 Easter eggs last year, bumped it up to 8,000 Easter eggs this year, but we were out of Easter eggs in the first hour. But I think that a lot of kids were very happy. Some changes, I think, for next year might be, might be coming, but, uh, overall, it was a great event, and at the same exact time, our green team had the community, our new pocket park, they had the rock painting, uh, that went very well, as well attended, I was even there for a little bit, I know they just scheduled another one that's gonna be coming up. Uh, also, the cherry blossom festival in Branchford Park has begun, this coming week will be the second weekend that they do that, a lot of good things going on there. Last week, also, I had attendance in Sandy Lane to celebrate and commence a week of the young child, a lot of great things happening in Sandy Lane, I was partnered up with our school district there. Uh, some upcoming events, this coming Saturday is a big, another big day in Belleville, if you thought last week was big, this week is gonna be even bigger. There's three different events happening this coming Saturday, uh, they start out at 10 o'clock with the track dedication and ribbon cutting, that is a track that Belleville's been waiting for, for at least three or four decades. When I was in high school, 30 years ago, we were talking about a track. Uh, not only do we have a track now, but it's a, it's an eight-lane competitive track, capable of holding state track meets, uh, really big get for Belleville in conjunction with the overall stadium, absolutely makes our stadium complex one of the best in the state. Right after that, at 10:30, if you remember about a year ago, a little longer than a year ago, we lost a young employee, Mr. Danny Rafferty, we lost him tragically and unexpectedly. He was very dedicated to our children, very dedicated to our rest program, we will be naming that driveway slash street that, uh, traverses the municipal stadium complex, we'll be naming that after him at 10:30. And at 11:00 AM, the rec department's been doing a great job organizing the recreation baseball and softball opening day, not to be confused with Little League Opening Day, which is later in the month, but this will be our recreation baseball opening day. So, a lot of events happening, it's gonna be great weather, 10 o'clock AM, 10:30 AM, and 11:30 AM. Uh, Belleville Police Department's doing the white rodeo on Saturday, April 22nd, that's gonna be number seven school, information's on the website. We have a health screening scheduled for Tuesday, May 2nd, information's on the website, and I know people are always asking about the mobile DMB unit, uh, that will be here on May 3rd, you must pre-register for that, again, link and information's on the website. A little bit of news, today, our fire department was on scene on Malone Avenue, a great job done by all, there was a fire there, uh, no injuries to report, uh, one person has been relocated and displaced. Uh, yesterday with the PBA Ball, congratulations, chief, our top cop, uh, fifth-ever PBA Gold Card Member, congratulations once again to our chief. Uh, councilor Ravel mentioned some of the crosswalks, uh, we are a safer community because of that new crosswalk at the middle school, looks great, by the way, it's a temporary installation, so if it goes well, potentially we'll get funding for other intersections. Uh, while we're officially blooming with cherry blossoms, uh, the bloom kinda happened at the wrong time, uh, the cherry blossoms got spooked last week, they came out this weekend, and, uh, because of all the events this weekend, and PBA Ball yesterday, and town council meeting today, we were not able to do the open cherry blossom this year. If they hang around a little longer, maybe we'll squeeze it in. Uh, at the last council meeting, we talked about, our budget was introduced, by the way, it was introduced on time, congratulations to council members and our administration, with the average assessed house of $279,000 receiving only an $89 increase, uh, that is municipal, not to be confused with the school board. Alternated side street parking has begun, and if you see our website, uh, you'll see that we've been all over this decant bus route being rerouted, uh, we've been working with the state, uh, and various governments at all kinds of levels to make sure that we get some kind of bus service back to the city. Uh, other than that, I'm done for my mayor's report. Next, on the agenda is the approval of minutes, we have the regular meeting of March 28, 2023, that was like, last meeting.
So, wow, great job.
Good job.
Not a year later.
Isn't that the right year, is that 2023?
Take those, little--
Was that 2003?
Make a motion?
Yes, I need a motion, please. I heard motions, I heard seconds, all over the place, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Graciado?
Yes.
Nautari?
No, I take no part.
Take no part. Listen here.
And Mayor Malham?
Yes.
So, it's a no for, uh, Ravel and a no for--
No, no. Yes, for me, no for the-- No part here. No part from the Tari, no part from--
Uh, number nine, communications, um, Mr. Jonathan Plush is requesting permission to hold the block party on June 24th on Celia Court between Celia Terrace and Overhill Road for a Juneteenth celebration. Uh, B, RFPs and RFQ results.
Just a quick, quick question on, on that, do we still get the lists where, where we, basically informs the neighbors as to what's going on, cause I remember we used to do that at one time?
I do not know, I, I got the email, I forwarded to, uh, the clerk's office for communication, and I forwarded to the police department, so the chief can do what he does, I'm not sure what happened.
Do we still do that, chief, where, where they, where he goes and, and kinda informs the rest of the neighbors what he's doing on that there?
Yeah.
So, they're on there.
And we are scheduled for that, right?
Yeah.
Yes, it's all taken care of. Uh, so B-- Say, say your court.
Yeah. So, B, I announced already, C, bids were received on Thursday, April 6, 2023, for Plansoll Park improvements, and the recommendation from Birmingham Burning Engineers, and the town manager was to reject all bids and re-advertise, and we heard the town manager speak on that just earlier. Uh, and number 10, ordinances, ordinances for possible adoption. I'm doing a great job. Ordinance 08-23, an ordinance to amend and revise general ordinances of a town show at Belleville, Chapter 8-16, entitled handicap parking spaces, need a motion.
Motion for public--
Okay.
Uh, yes.
Need open-- Motion open for public--
We have a motion made in second to open for public hearing, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Graciado?
Yes.
Nautari?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.
Stromel Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Malham?
Yes, we are open for public hearing, and public hearing's only on this particular ordinance. There are none, seeing none, I'm saying a motion to adopt a move for final adoption.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion made in second to adopt a move for final option, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Graciado?
Yes.
Nautari?
Yes.
Ravel?
Yes.[1568.91]
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
And Mayor Malham?
Yes. Ordinance, the ordinance adopted, ordinance 12-23, ordinance for introduction. And ordinance to amend revised general ordinances of township of Bellville, New Jersey, chapter 8-16, entitled handicap parking spaces. Need a motion to introduce.
Motion.
Second. We have a motion made in second to introduce. Clerk call roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
De Penya?
Yes.
Garciaano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
And Mayor Malham?
Yes. Order 13-23, ordinance for introduction. An ordinance approving the First Amendment to the financial agreement by and between the township of Bellville and R&amp;R Bellville Urban Renewal LLC.
Motion introduce?
Motion to introduce.
Second.
We have a motion to introduce and a second. Clerk call roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
De Penya?
Yes.
Garciaano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Garciaano?
Yes.
On the table is the same as that. You should kill that.
Kill it?
Can't take it off. Take it off, get out of here. If you sleep, you take it off.
Just let it die. Just let it die.
Let it go.
So that was for second reading, you're saying?
Yeah.
So we just let it go.
Just let it sit there until it's all out.
We got it.
Okay, next on the agenda would be public comment. Need a motion open for public comment.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion made in second open for public comment. Clerk call roll.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
De Penya?
Yes.
Garciaano?
Yes.
Notari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Garciaano?
Yes, we are now open for public commenting. Just going to ask you to please raise your hand. Once you are selected, please come forward. Speak your name and address for the record. And you have five minutes to hopefully talk about Bellville business. Anybody else? Mr. Frank Dantoni? Chief, can you picture that? Don't please say it.
Yes, get another opportunity to thank you finally after two and a half years. The handicap sign for taking away from, in front of the else.
You're thanking the chief. Thank you, chief, for a two and a half year.
All right. Now, if we can correct some of the other handicap spaces. The one in front of my building, I told you, you've got two faint lines and the meters right there at the front. And people are parking there with my tenants at work. And they think it's the meter for that spot there. That meter is for the space in front. It should be moved to the front to make it a little easier for people to understand that. The other thing in the municipal lot, you've got former two handicap spaces, the blue lines, they've never been painted white. And the other thing is we have no consistency. I brought this up before, the way we paint them. You can't notice that one there. Across street from my 136 mile prospect, they painted those lines in white. And most of the handicap space, they put the sign at the front of the parking space. This one they put on the back so people think it's for the driveway. And they're parking, the chief should know. The police have been called several times from my neighbor across the street. It's not properly straight. I hope we can finally get some consistency. Some are painted blue, some are painted white. They're not the three sided like Bloomfield does, which makes it very obvious that it's a handicap space. And please consider allowing coins. You know, people are complaining like crazy. They can't use a coin for 15 minutes to go pick up something. They got to use a credit card. Resolution C, the infrastructure bank. What is this loan or number one, is it a loan or a grant? And what's it for?
My manager can take, I believe, a loan. I believe I saw attached to lead line replacements.
No.
That's a surplus of these vehicles?
No, no, no. It's on new business.
Oh, new business.
That's our business. The $5 million is for the lead line replacement. So this is the first step of putting the money in order to borrow again. That's the $5 million for lead line replacement.
For the?
Lead line replacement.
The lead line replacement?
Yes.
My neighbor had a problem and I went to help her out and she's got a lead line. She called up and they said that they're always doing specific streets.
That is correct.
What is she doing case like that?
So tactically, it's her responsibility at this point. And it could change in the future, but right now, we have only so much, so much money and so many streets designated. And these were the streets that we were doing since so many streets were being repaid.
Before they get paid.
Which is Mr. Frank Dantoni's suggestion.
Which is great. Love it.
Yep.
So she has no recourse now to get paid?
No.
At all?
No, sir.
And finally, you talked about the putting a ring system for the gas usage control. All right. You know, we go over all this fancy technology and then it don't work and this don't work and this is, so. I did that one out, it was very simple. Made up a simple form. Anytime anybody filled up gas, they had to put the vehicle number, the mileage on the vehicle, how many gallons they took over there. And we're able to keep accurate control to the gallon. And one time, I see the guy filled up twice. So we could question him. The reason was he had to go all the way down to South Jersey to pick up some equipment. So it's so easy to do it with a piece of paper. We all do all this technology and then we hire people. We hire consultants, we pay consultants to do something that's a very simple matter. So I mean, that's not a big deal. Keep writing DPW, you've got one gas pump down there. Every car fills up and you know exactly how much fuel you've got there. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in public commenting? Mayor?
Route 95 Bell Street. Question ask you, I've noticed you've been driving around in town vehicles. Is that your vehicle or a town vehicle that you're using?
I think you just answered your question.
I'm just asking you the question. Is it yours or a personal one or is it a town?
You started out by saying.
That doesn't make a difference. Let's not be technical. You know what I'm saying? Is it your vehicle or a town vehicle?
Can you describe the vehicle?
Yeah, the one sitting out there, the one I seen you driving.
My Lexus is sitting outside.
Is it your town vehicle?
The Lexus is mine.
Not the Lexus, the other vehicle.
Well, Mayor, can you tell me what car you're talking about?
Yeah, one, the black SUV, the police SUVs you were, you've been driving around in that.
I have driven that vehicle.
Is there any reason why you're entitled to that?
Town boy.
Or you just don't, or you just don't want to pay for the gas?
I don't pay for gas. I pay for my own gas.
And why are you OEM manager, OEM, deputy OEM?
You have to direct that to the OEM coordinator.
When, when did you become the deputy director?
50 questions, I guess. I think January 1st.
And who appointed you?
The coordinator.
I think, I don't think you can be appointed to that because.
And you should take that up to the guy.
That comes under the commission form of government, which the mayor can appoint, according to the state statutes that I found. And I don't think you're properly in that position. Also, the deputy OEM gets a stipend. Are you taking the stipend of $10,000?
I am not.
Good. I'm glad you said that. I was hoping you said that. Uh, question, the pickleball.
Of course not.
What was that? Your kid's here to come? No, you asked me what your kid is here to come in?
No, obviously no.
Probably pick up on tape, but that's okay. The pickleball, is that always closed on the weekends?
Right, that's the manager. No, why would it be closed on the weekends?
Well, you were there, so.
I was there, so why would it be closed on the weekends? It's a recreational facility on the municipal stadium complex.
After you left, somebody put a lock on it.
On me?
Is there any reason? You played pickleball Saturday.
I did.
But then why, why was it locked after you left?
I didn't put a lock. I don't know.
Somebody locked it right after you.
Well, we need a police investigation.
Something you have to look into, why it was locked. Nobody could use it. And would you like to make a comment that either the state police or some other agency was here looking for records between here and the Board of Ed? Would you comment on that?
I have no knowledge.
No comment?
No, I said no knowledge.
No knowledge of it? Okay, that's what you say. Well, I'll tell you. It seems like whenever I come up here with certain people, you just get, you know, plain arrogant with us.
I answered every single one of your questions.
No, your attitude, you have an attitude. I'm still talking about today, other meetings.
Every single one of your questions, Mayor, everyone.
Yeah, well, I would, I would hope you would resign and let Garciaano. I think Garciaano will be a better mayor than you with, with the attitude. He has a better attitude than you. I think you should resign.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public commenting, not necessarily questions. I'm sorry, I apologize. I'll get you next. Get that mic.
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, 47th Flight Street. Tonight, for the first time since beginning of the year, there was an adequate amount of parking space available in municipal lot. I hope that trend continues, even though I wish success for the proprietors of the restaurant next door. I had asked maybe six weeks ago if some of the reserve spots in the municipal lot east of this building after hours could be used by the public. You've got maybe a dozen spots in a row that are marked as reserved. It would seem to make sense for everyone's sake if those spots could be utilized by the public after hours. Didn't get any response. I would like to know if, if that could possibly be done. Next question, something I've been meaning to ask for quite a while. I just wanted a confirmation, all of the Bellville patrol officers, they're all now equipped with body cams. I just wanted to make sure that that was in place. Hopefully Chief Manikini can, can answer that question in a few moments. You already acknowledged that the public hearing for the budget will take place at the next meeting on the 25th. I just had the heads up.
Wait, 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 when did I say that?
It's, well, it's in the published, within the, in the budget that you published on the township website on Wednesday, on Thursday.
If it's printed there, it's printed there. But you just said that I said it. I didn't say that.
I thought I heard you.
You did not.
All right, well, in any case, the, the introduced budget that was published to the township website last Thursday indicates that the public hearing for this budget will take place on April 25th, which is the next meeting. So you know, maybe you can confirm that it will be the case. I, I thought I heard you say that, one of you say that the public hearing would be taking place in, so maybe that's still up in the air.
It's tasty.
All right, well.
We have to wait for this. We have to wait for the state to get reviewed.
All right, well, all right, well, when that time comes, I did have some questions about the information on page 16, which involves the Bellville Board of Ed. Under anticipated revenues, there's about a one and a half million dollar. I know what that is. It's the shared services bond mortgage, but I have some other questions to ask about that when the time comes. Under the consent agenda, item C, you're getting rid of surplus property. Out of curiosity, I looked at some of those VIN numbers and there's at least one VIN number that's wrong. It doesn't match up with the, with the vehicle. I didn't bring that list along, but if there's any need for the governing body or Mr. Cabrera or Mr. Iacono to know that there are potentially incorrect VIN numbers before you dispose of this property, please let me know. I'll send you the list later tonight as a separate email. But you should know about that. Little Street, the repaving of Little Street, I hope, is going to happen in the near future. It looks like all of the plumbing, gas line, water mains are all finished now. Little Street, of course, is one of township's emergency routes. The current condition of it right now is abysmal. I hope that before we get too far into spring, the street is repaved and then that follows with new tree plantings. Because Little Street right now looks like Beirut from the 1980s. See anything else here? Oh, just as a follow up, I have a few seconds left. Mario brought up OEM situation. And I was curious to see what the procedure is for folks to be involved with the OEM in a given municipality. I'm referencing here the state's Office of Emergency Management Directive number 102. If you want a copy of this, I can email it to you. But it says under Article A, the appointment of the emergency, municipal emergency management coordinator in every municipality state is done by the mayor. And then later on in the same section, subsection two, subsection C, it says each emergency management coordinator shall appoint one and may appoint more than one deputy emergency management coordinator with the approval of the mayor. Wherever possible, such deputies shall be appointed from among the salaried officers of the municipality. Now, Mr. Martino can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think as a strict technicality, none of the members of the council are considered salaried employees. So by virtue of that, I think what the intent of this law is, is that the deputy OEM people are supposed to be selected from the actual employees of the township and not the governing body. But you can correct me if I'm wrong about that, but I think that's, that's what the law implies. So I've got only 15 seconds left. So before I retire to my seat, I just wanted to express my condolences to Mr. Latari over the loss of his mother.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the rails, oh, man, I promise you that.
I thought you didn't call me because you know what I was here for.
No.
Parking as usual. And as I was sitting there, I was feeling a little, to come back up here and bring this same subject. I'm sorry, Wendy Harris, Quentin Street, 7 Quentin Street. Bring this subject up over and over. Been going through this for over 25 years, but it's only gotten worse and I've gotten a little bit older. It, it's just getting ridiculous now. I called and someone told me to get the license plates of cars.